Good evening. I'd like to call to order the school choice open public hearing, which will be followed by our regular school committee meeting. As is our tradition, please join me in pledging allegiance to our God and our country.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The purpose of this public hearing is to determine, for the school committee to determine whether or not it wishes to accept the provisions of Mass General laws, Chapter 76, Section 12B, which allows school districts to accept students from outside the district and to be paid tuition in exchange for that. The school committee must take an annual vote in this regard. Our vote in the previous fiscal year was to not avail ourselves of that option. So, is there anyone who would like to speak to this from the general public? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Second.
You've got to give me a motion first.
A motion to vote on it for approval, I'm sorry. I was...
Either to accept or not to accept.
I move that we don't accept.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Do we have a recommendation from the superintendent?
I agree.
We have agreement from the superintendent on the motion. So, the motion is not to accept the school choice option for the Milton Public School District for the fiscal '17 school year. On the motion, all in favor? It's unanimous. Five-zero mark. Thank you. Now, we'll call to order the regular school committee meeting. On the agenda is approval of the agenda. We do have a few changes. Under the superintendent's report, we're going to strike item A, and we'll take that up again at the May 25 meeting. Under the chair's report, I'd like to add two items. One is item D, which will be school committee member vacation schedules, and item E, which will be private school approval request update. And then finally, under finance, under third quarter report, I have some suggestions for Dr. Pavlicek. So, we'll hear a discussion on that item, but we won't take the vote this evening. Any other changes?
I think we're going to remove the second reading of the security camera policy from the policies subcommittee report.
Agreed. Okay, with those changes, we will accept the agenda as modified. Anyone for citizen speak more? Then we can move right to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman. We're going to put out an email blast tomorrow that has all of the updated information regarding the school district, so I'll pass on happenings.
Okay.
And next meeting, we'll do the field trip.
Okay.
Thank you.
Move to the chair's report. I just wanted, so we took the school choice vote, so I just wanted to mention that I asked Charlene and at the same time commend all the help I got from Charlene on the new school committee member orientation packet. We sent it out to everyone because I think it's not bad to do a refresher for everyone. So, look at those items carefully. The two things we still owe you are policy books. We need to get policy books for Elaine and Margaret. And I'll also give you some suggestions, the policy book is very thick, but I'll also give you some suggestions as to what policies that I think you need to look at right away. And I asked Dr. Pavlicek to provide a roster for each school, staff by title and name.
I'm sorry, what was that, Lori?
A roster for each school.
Okay.
Staff by title and name.
I believe you have.
Okay, great. Okay.
It's in there. I saw it.
Great. Thank you. As always, you're ahead of me. Next, we have needs and priorities fiscal '17, and you do have an attachment. What you have is the result of quite a bit of work by the superintendent and her team, and subsequently by the school committee, to try to determine what the most important needs and priorities were for the Milton Public Schools. At the time, this was in anticipation of a possible override and the availability of certain funds. The collective wisdom ultimately was that we would not do an override. But, given the importance of these priorities and given the amount of work that the superintendent and her team did, I thought it was particularly important to take another look at these and to give our new members the opportunity to either endorse or suggest that we make some changes, but most importantly, to have a discussion about whether there were one, two, I think it's probably one or two at the most, but priorities that we might wish to try to fund going forward even without the override. So, I think that that would be a healthy discussion to have. What I would encourage you to do is to take a look at this list, certainly check in with the superintendent if you have questions, and be prepared next meeting to try to reach some consensus on what the top one or two priorities are that we should try to fund even without the override.
Oh, that's...
Ms. Varela?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. Just getting a little water update. We were going to get a water supply from superintendent. So, Lori, just so I'm clear on this, from the additional, from the highest priority and from the additional items that were discussed for last year's budget, you'd still want us to bring to the table what, from all of it, what we would like to maybe possibly for our top one and two to put in for this year's budget?
Because this is a very different discussion. So, in each of these categories, we had our top priorities. Now, we're saying, on this entire list, what do you think are the one or two top priorities?
Okay.
If we can find a way to fund those.
And another question, I'm sorry. I assume that we'll strike full day K because we know that that's already going?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Hi, Kristen.
Hi. Sorry to be late. I was coming from Logan Airport. A little trip. So, this needs and priorities, is everything on here that we had on here before? So, like the position of the PE slash AD, is that on here?
Yes.
What?
Additional items.
Down here. Okay. And is anything else, everything's here that was here before?
Right. But in deference to our new members, I thought we should have the discussion again.
Absolutely.
And to your point, that doesn't mean that something's not on here, couldn't be put on here.
No, I didn't see that. So, I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing anything, and then we wouldn't necessarily have to keep them in this order either.
Not at all. Particularly if we're trying to narrow this list down to one or two priorities, then we've got to make some choices about middle school, high school, elementary, district-wide.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. One more thing. I also believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Gormley or Dr. Pavlicek, but I think that the increased nursing support of the 6,700 is already in there for next year, too. We have, there's going to be, I think it's already there, for just extra part-time support for the...
We have, we have support for substitute nurses, but we don't have the 6,700 above.
Did you, we didn't add, I know, I thought that we added at least one other, is it one other or two other, like, yeah, like that subs to support Nurse Gibbons where she, where they would need him, like rotating around the system?
We have that currently. We didn't add anything, though.
Oh, you didn't?
This additional item was to give more money to that line than we currently have in that line.
I thought because it was such a minimal amount of 6,700 that we were able to put that in the non-contingent, but okay, thanks for clarifying.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
For the top two here, the elementary, restore art music, and then for the history teacher at the middle school, had these cuts been in effect for how many years now? One or two years? Just one. So, one whole full academic year without the team structure at the Pierce, and one whole academic year with the reduction for art music and PE. Is that correct?
I'm not sure that, is that correct?
The team structure, certainly. The art music and PE has been decreasing for a while.
Right.
That's more than one year.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, just to let you know.
Ms. Varela?
Sorry. So, yeah, just to clarify that the history teacher and the position of vice principal moving down to dean has definitely just been over the past full year, this school year starting in September, I mean, in 2015 to 2016.
Dr. Donahue?
And then, just to add my two cents, to point out that this list is grouped by function. This is not necessarily a list of priorities, one through whatever they are, as they are listed here. They're grouped sort of functionally, so people should consider that when they go home, when they think about where they would like to rank things.
And can I, one more question?
Is there one?
For the elementary here, where it says additional special education teachers for COTAR grades four and five, in all four elementary schools, these teachers are currently only half-time?
No. The COTAR is at the Glover School, and at the Pierce, we, at the Tucker, we carry a few grades.
Okay.
So, it would be definitely at the Glover, and I believe next year, fourth or fifth, there's a fourth or fifth at Tucker COTAR.
So, for the younger grades, they are full-time?
At one, two, and three.
Okay.
Two teachers, and then at four and five, it's a spent teacher half the day.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Craig, did you have a question?
Yes. Could someone explain to me what the restore vice principal from dean means?
Want to start Glenn, and then I'll pick up?
The difference is, the dean, while the, is a unit A versus a unit B position in terms of where they live in the contract, the dean as such can't perform any evaluations, which puts more of a burden on the principal to be doing staff evaluations. Restoring it to a vice principal, assistant principal position would allow that person to do more evaluations. They still do discipline, they still do some of the other facets of being a vice principal, but they, the major difference is they can't perform evaluations.
Okay. Thank you.
The other thing I'd like to suggest is that we try to collectively, Superintendent Dr. Pavlicek and I try to develop a list of potential unanticipated expenses that might also come to bear. We probably should have both of those discussions at the same time.
I get it.
Something interesting about anticipating the unanticipated.
Stay with me.
We'll give it a shot.
Right. Well, I can think of, I can already think of a couple of things that we didn't anticipate that we now know about, which to the committee would be unanticipated.
For example, would be the PC jury point.
Exactly. On a lighter note, school committee member vacation schedules. Looking to schedule the retreat, and I have good news, I talked with Glenn Kuchar at Mass Association of School Committees. He did an outstanding job for us two years ago, and he's willing to do it again, but obviously, we'll need to see whether the schedules match up. So, if you know now, I'd love to have the information. If not, as soon as possible. So, for July and August, what your vacation schedules would be?
Okay. Should we just email those to you, or do you want...
That would be great.
Okay. Can I ask?
Absolutely. Ms. Bagley Jones?
Day of the week, time, afternoon, evening?
Well, I'm flexible on that, and I'm also flexible on, as is he, on during the week or weekend. So, it could be a Saturday if the committee wanted to do that and the administration would go along, or it could be a day during the week, whatever works best for your summer work schedules.
This is for, I prefer like a, like a late afternoon, like a four to six, a four to seven, or even four to eight, like with a break or whatever, something like that.
We probably need about four hours.
Yeah. I'd like that, yeah.
Because I'd like to accomplish a couple of things. One is to do the year-end review, how did we do? And one of the things I'm going to send out to all of you is the very rich data report that we got last year on a whole host of measures that the superintendent has worked on. So, I'd like for you to look at that and make sure that that information and those measures are what you'll need to assess how we did this year, and whether there are things we might add. So, if there are, I'd like to let the superintendent know that as soon as possible. So, looking at the year-end review, how did we do, what might we do differently going forward, and then some discussion and consensus on both what the district goals are for the coming fiscal year, and by association, what the superintendent's goals should be for the coming year. And I'd like to make sure we accomplish both of those things. So, I think that's roughly a three to four hour discussion. Ms. Varela?
I was wondering if at that retreat, that the Mass rep could go over Robert's Rules. I think it would be good because we have so many new members with, two new members and even myself only being a second year, but if they could do any, even if it's a half an hour, but just an overview on it, on rules and regulations or procedures, I think it would be very helpful if they're willing to do it, just putting that out there for consideration.
I'm happy to do something like that. What I'll do first is get everybody a book on Robert's Rules, and I'm not sure the MASC person is the right person, but we'll make sure you get a refresher on that.
Okay.
It's not that complicated, but it's not bad to know about that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's some...
Oh, it's a little backup here, sorry.
Thank you.
Next. Private school approval request update. As you know, we have a request from an individual to open a new private school in town. I have had some discussions with the superintendent, but today I talked with, again, Glenn Kuchar at Mass Association of School Committees, asked him to provide any information he might have about guidance for school committees, and also to canvas MASC districts about whether they've had more recent experience with that. He said he would do both of those things. I also talked with Steve Finnegan, who's the general counsel for MASC, and had a good conversation with him about how we might approach this. So, I think in tandem with the work that the policy committee is doing, we probably should have a more specific proposal for the committee next meeting as to how we should proceed. So, I'll sit down with the superintendent and with Dr. Donahue, and we should have a much better sense of what the steps are and what the timeline is. Ms. Bagley Jones?
Just a quick question. Did you say this, or did we find out about, say, not there, Delphi and Montessori, because they're private schools? Did you say that?
I didn't.
I didn't.
Okay.
In the early '70s.
Yes.
There's no history of any meetings ever being held or reviews being done.
Got it. Thank you.
Interesting. Moving right along to finance subcommittee report. We don't have one, so I'm taking that up for the moment, and hopefully, which is a good time to also say, so I'm trying to finish up my one-on-ones with each of you, at which I'm asking you what your subcommittee preferences are, but I'd like to reach consensus on that at our May 25 meeting as well. Town meeting update, anyone feel free to join in. I thought all the feedback I got was the discussion was well-received, and the presentation was well-received, and we only had, I think it was 278 to one, so not a bad vote. Ms. Bagley Jones?
To come in late and then to talk every minute, but I thought it was one of the best presentations, not that the others haven't been good, but in terms of giving the overview of what it meant and really breaking it down for the viewing public, I thought it was great. I thought everybody that participated in getting up there did a really good job.
Yeah, I'm going to just echo that, that being a town meeting member, I think I commend all the superintendents and all the former members and former chair, that whatever input in the staff and the internal staff, everyone at the Milton Public Schools internal staff that participated in it, I think it's very valuable that we always go out there to town meeting and are very transparent on our budget, do a presentation, you know, I think on all aspects of the school, where the money's going. Again, I think it's crucial because we're the biggest budget in town, and so I, again, I echo what Ms. Bagley Jones says, that, you know, it was very good and I think was very well-received, and great job by everybody.
Ms. Everard?
I thought that the presentation did an excellent job of showing how well the investment of the town is in the school system, not academically, you know, in the sports and the music and arts, absolutely, all the ways that you demonstrated that. You couldn't sit there and watch it and not be so proud of living in this town and being involved, and of all the families and the students who attend the school district. And I thought the presentation really just brought that all together very well, and it was wonderful. Very proud of it.
Great. Did you have...
Just one other piece, not on that, but another aspect of town meeting, the capital improvement planning committee budget that was voted through. We are in the process of preparing bid documents on the resurfacing of the track around Brooksfield, which we're trying to get done this summer. And that's part of the capital improvement plan, but that's a tricky process because it means shutting down the field for four to six weeks, which is not easy. So, and plus, it's a substantial document that has to be drawn up in order to put that out to bid, in order to get bids on it. So, that's underway. The plans are already drawn for the extension of parking behind the fieldhouse entrance. We're going to add 21 parking spaces at the Copeland Fieldhouse entrance. Those plans are drawn, that money was appropriated at town meeting, that will be underway this summer. And then the money for network infrastructure was appropriated, and that's also going to be underway this summer. So, from a capital perspective, this is going to be a very busy summer, trying to manage all these simultaneous projects, but they are projects that you can't do when school is in session, so it's of necessity.
And would Dr. Pavlicek speak to a really good news story? The cameras, and I appreciate you lobbying at the Capitol Committee for us, Jim and Walker, the cameras at the elementary schools. Huge, long overdue and well-received by PTO presidents and administrators. Thank you.
And the Milton Police Department. Ms. Bagley Jones?
Quick question. I know we talked about this a while ago in terms of the tariff on Brooksfield for football and the other sports. Did that ever, did that get done? There was a 10-year plan or something of doing...
Want to speak to that?
We're not doing the turf yet. The turf is still in usable shape. It is, or the track around it that needs some work.
I thought there was a plan.
So, there is. We've been putting money aside from our rentals as we go because we've been, we added several years ago, basically, a $25 charge to each of the rentals of the field so we could bank some money because there's, it's a huge expense. Even just doing the track is, you know, over $100,000.
Yeah.
To do the track on the field would be three times that anyway.
Good.
So, it's, it's a large commitment, but the field itself is good for a while longer, but the track needs some work.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Third quarter report, if you've had a chance to look at it, be happy to take any questions As I said at the outset, I'm not going to take a vote on this this evening, but I would suggest that these quarterly reports and the warrant, the vendor warrants, are two incredibly useful pieces of information that tell you a whole lot about what's going on in the district and where we're spending our money. And that's pretty important information. And the accompanying memo tries to give you some feedback, and I think does a good job of that. The only suggestions I have, Dr. Pavlicek, are in the instances where we're significantly overspent or underspent. If you, we're about three-quarters of the way through the fiscal year, so we'd expect about, it's never a straight line, but we'd expect about 25% of the funding to be left in those lines. So, where we're significantly overspent or underspent, the memo addresses some of that, but I think there's still some remaining questions, but we can talk about that offline. Any comments, questions? Ms. Bagley Jones?
I have really appreciated these reports, and I forgot to say that the information about the grants is really helpful. So, I know that that in the past had been, or way past, had been an issue in terms of what do we have, what are we spending, who's it from, all of that, so I just wanted to note that. That's helpful. So, thank you.
Sure.
So, for the line item that talks about the extra transportation cost being over $100,000, since this is a sort of a new process to me, is that like something that's very much over in previous years? Was that just, it says something to do with change in placements?
That's for special ed transportation, the little buses.
Okay.
Our budget for special education transportation is about $900,000 a year.
Okay.
Just for transportation. We, at the end of last year, we had 48 out placements, and plus, we have children in town who require transportation as well. Currently, we have 54 out placements, and those are in many ways unpredictable, even if an individual educational program says, all of a sudden, a child has to go out of district, you have to do that. So, we had anticipated some increase in that line, but not to that extent. And it's a function of where they're going, as well as, you know, whether, for instance, if a, even if it's an in-town transportation, if a child requires an aide while they're on the bus, that's an enormous increment in the cost, whereas, you know, most of the children are not riding with an aide. You know, there's six children on the small bus or something like that, and it's not an issue. So, there were just some issues this year, that and one of the bus companies reorganized, which was a little tricky as well. Special ed transportation, unlike regular ed transportation, is not on a contract. Special ed transportation is exempt from Massachusetts' bid laws. So, we negotiate individually with four or five different providers, and to the extent we can get a better deal from one than another, we move more of our service to one than another, and we're constantly negotiating that, unlike the yellow buses, which have to go out to bid, and we have a three-year contract, and those sorts of issues. So, it's a little more fluid.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. Next, we have a recommendation to make a payment to the town regarding the school resource officer. We have two school resource officers. One is paid for by the Milton Police Department, the second one is paid for by us. This particular individual, Officer Potts, has been worth his weight in gold, and he has helped to avert issues at the Pierce. He's been instrumental in numerous issues and incidents here at the high school. He's been, he's developed some incredible relationships with the children, so I think this is, this is money well-spent, but the arrangement is we pay for this second school resource officer. So the recommendation is to make such a payment, and I'll entertain a motion to do so.
Okay. So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Bagley Jones, seconded by Ms. Varela. Questions?
I just want to be clear to the viewing public, this is not a new position for, I mean, the payment is not new. Just want to make that clear.
It's just.
No, 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 I know that, but I wanted to make sure that it was clear.
Ms. Varela?
For not adding any positions.
To add on to that, again, for the viewing public, again, just to echo that, that it's just that procedurally, we have to approve it each year, but it's not a new position and it's already in our non-contingent budget and et cetera, et cetera.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Walker alluded to Officer Potts working at PSN High School. I think too, it's good for the viewing audience and parents to know that these two offices make themselves available to all four principals, all six principals, and if issues arise around family issues or elementary principals need access or to follow up on something, these two offices respond immediately. So to what Mr. Walker inferred was the relationship, the work ethic, to see these offices in the schools, and they tell me that the benefit is then the way the students look at the police and speak with the police and, you know, develop relationships. It's invaluable. The two offices have been valuable in the Milton Public Schools.
I'm really glad you mentioned that because we should, we should give credit to both of them. I've had some experience with the Norfolk County District Attorney's School Security Task Force, so in the course of that, I've met a host of schools, school resource officers, and I can tell you that we have two of the best in the state. We're really fortunate.
So that's Maria Poles and Chris Potts.
Right. Ms. Bagley Jones?
Is Officer Potts a graduate of Milton High School?
Yes. Good point.
As is the superintendent, we found out at town meeting.
Thank you, Jimmy Mullin.
Okay, on the motion, all in favor. It's unanimous. Approval of the vendor warrant?
Since last we met, you've signed two vendor warrants, and we haven't had a chance to vote on them. I don't have one for you tonight, but for next week. But they are, vendor warrant number 44 on April 28th, in the amount of $206,915.13, and vendor warrant 45 dated May 5th, in the amount of $335,844.97.
Move approval of vendor warrant number 44 dated April 28th, in the amount of $206,915.13. Second. On the motion, all in favor. It's unanimous. Move approval of vendor warrant number 45 dated May 5th, in the amount of $335,844.97.
Second.
On the motion, all in favor. It's unanimous. Thank you. That's it for finance subcommittee. Dr. Donahue?
So the policy report, the security camera policy came back from legal this afternoon. There were some, some good edits, so look forward to seeing those for the next school committee meeting, when hopefully we'll have a second reading of that policy. So that brings us to our policy adoption policy. And by way of history, there were several policies that we worked through this last fall that required some minor changes, and for the benefit of our new members, our policy adoption policy outlines a strict two-step process where we have first reading, where we present the new policy or the vendor policy at the meeting, and then we discuss the changes. There's no vote taken, and then there's the second reading where there's, again, further discussion, further amendments, 15 necessary, and a vote taken at that time. So we took the opportunity to, to try and streamline that process because we were dealing with some very sort of minimal changes in the sense of the text. There are specific legal references, but it still had to, it took up a lot of time for a school committee meeting. So the edits that you have in bold are the edits to our policy adoption policy. So this policy was further discussed at the subcommittee meeting that we had immediately preceding today's full school committee meeting. And we made some minor changes, which, which I'm going to accept as a friendly amendment since it's my motion, but if you look down to the bold under the one and two bullets, so I'm going to strike chair or acting chair of the full school committee. It was, it was brought out that it was extremely unlikely that there would be a scenario where the chair or acting chair would think that there's an emergency condition and there wouldn't be concordance by the superintendent, so it seemed redundant. The bullet point two remains unchanged, and then there was some sort of general discussion about, should we, should we take this opportunity to streamline the process even further? It was pointed out that we operate under Robert's Rules of Order, and we do have the option of suspending our rules and waiving a first reading under those rules of order, probably, but we may take this opportunity to make that an explicit change for policies that are not controversial or that our legal team is heavily involved with, and there's not a lot of sort of back and forth over the substance or the specifics of the language. So with that background, I'm going to suggest that we add a third bullet point that would say, wording to the effect that if, if there's an amended policy where the, there's concordance between the superintendent, the chair of the full school committee, and the chair of the policy subcommittee, that we could waive the first reading and skip straight to a second reading. And I'll open, I'll open the policy up to further discussion.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
Second.
Would there be a reason to not do that?
I can't think of a good one, and the example that's, well, so the example that stuck in my mind was our discussion last spring about our residency policy, where we had changes to the policy, and it wasn't an emergency, but the administration wanted to sort of move on things as quickly as possible, and because of the two-step process, we delayed things by, by two or three weeks. There weren't a lot of, there weren't subsequent changes to the policy, there wasn't a lot of debate about the policy at the school committee level. It's not, it's not intended to be a means of sort of moving things through the full school committee without vetting, but rather moving things for a broad consensus and, you know, and no objections.
Ms. Varela?
Yeah, so as a member of the policy committee, I just think in the examples that Dr. Donahue gave, that, you know, it is, sometimes it's, it's like, I kind of feel like it's a legal thing where that if there, if there is no vetting, if there is no concern on the first reading, if there is no feedback, it's just, you know, there could be times when we could just, you know, waive the first, you know, waive the second reading and, or waive this, what we say call the first reading and make it the second, but I just think it can be beneficial in certain circumstances that we could move policy along when there, you know, there's no, there's no disagreement and overall consensus, and all you're doing is waiting two weeks to approve it, for the most part.
Ms. Bagley Jones?
So if I could ask the superintendent for her historical recommendation about that, because I'll tell you what my concern would be, because I totally agree that we should move things on, but sometimes there are issues in policies that we don't know that the viewing public will have questions on, so that would be my concern. We might think, oh yeah, this is no substantial, you know, but it gives folks another time to respond. On the other hand, you know, we need to move some things along. So Mary, I don't know if over the years, there's been issues where it's been good to have those two readings or not good.
It's a great question. I've never had any input from the viewing public.
Okay, you know, if there's something controversial, that's what I'm thinking of.
Right.
But we don't necessarily know what will be controversial.
And since Dr. Pavlicek and I sit on the subcommittee, we, I feel like we have input. If we wanted to hold, we have sent these to general counsel, we've sent some of these to the police, and we work collaboratively so that we can hold anything back, or ask for more time, or more sets of eyes to look at it. I feel very comfortable with this.
Perfect, thank you for that.
And, and if I may, I would add that, you know, if, if we're bringing something up to the school committee and, you know, there's, you know, people are uncomfortable moving through it quickly, then we don't. You know, it's simply there as an option where, you know, if everybody's comfortable and, you know, we're, we're making changes, sometimes substantial, sometimes non-substantial, but, but there's consensus, then.
Why not?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Everhart?
So these are amended policies that you would waive the first reading, or so policies that you're making in place already that you're changing?
We, it could be either.
Either, okay.
If you have specific input on your thoughts on that, I'm open to it.
Oh, I just was trying to clarify in my own head if it was new, amending an old one or?
And for the new members, you wouldn't get them that night and us ask you. You'd get them in the packet, so as Dr. Donahue said, if you had a lot of questions that night, I need another two weeks to think about this. I'd ask the policy subcommittee to consider this, so no one will be asked on the spot.
Right, and my view of that, as well as any of our deliberations, in any instance where any member says, I would like to defer this, I would like more time, unless there is an incredibly time-sensitive issue, I'm going to go along with that, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Bagley Jones?
I don't know why I have all these questions, so, and I, Policy Subcommittee, did we ever talk about, you know how it is on the, the school committee, what's it called, MASC, their website where they have all the towns that participate in the website policy manuals or policy procedures, do you know what I mean? Where it says like the town of Abington, and then you read all their policies right there? Have we ever considered doing that, or is that just like a huge undertaking? So you go online and you click on Milton's school policies, and they're right there, if we were a part of that?
So can I finish the vote on this motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. You should have interrupted me. I'm very sorry about that.
So the motion is to add a second bullet, third bullet, thank you, Dr. Donahue, which says that with the concurrence of the chair of the policy subcommittee, the superintendent, and the chair of the school committee, that a second reading could be waived. Is that correct?
Correct, or we would move under, we would move to the procedure outlined under the second reading where we would then vote on it.
Is that clear?
Very clear.
Okay, on the motion, all in favor. It's unanimous. Thank you. Back to Ms. Bagley Jones' question?
Thank you.
Which is, do we, can we display, we have, there's a link on the website now that has school committee policies.
You know, this is different. This is, what I was asking about is on this MASC's website, they're just right there, you can click on whichever towns you want to see, but it also looks like they're kind of all there for you instead of our policy book, which is this big. I'm not sure of the process, I don't know how that works, I'm just curious if we've ever looked at that as a way to get policy sort of a little bit easier.
Ms. Varela?
So, Ms. Bagley, so you're saying that when you go to MASC's website, that, that a town would have submitted their link to them, so someone could just go in and see Abington and Braintree and Arlington and Weymouth or whatever? And so you're wondering if we, if we've, if we have ours digitally available?
No, I know, that's not what I mean, I'm sorry.
Okay. A little confusing.
It's, towns opt to join into electronic policies that are just listed by the town. I mean, maybe you can just poke around at it and see. It just looked like a very efficient way to do it. The policy is not, you know, there's a lot, you know? So I just, I guess I was wondering if we had ever looked at it, but if no one knows, maybe it'd be something to look at just to see if it would be easier. That was my thought, so. Sharing that maybe is a suggestion. Thank you.
We're happy to, we're happy to look into that, you know, anything that we can do to make the policies easier to read and, you know, easier to find. It does, there are a lot, there's a lot of cross-referencing, so.
And also, it's valuable to Ms. Bagley Jones's point, when we have an upcoming policy and Dr. Donahue and Ms. Varela ask, Charlene Roch goes on the listserv for administrative assistance, and will give us six or seven communities who respond with their policy on the topic that we're looking at. So to your point, Ms. Bagley Jones, it would be a double check or a backup to that.
Yeah, it's good.
Thank you. Facilities Subcommittee, you have a memo from Dr. Pavlicek which explains this, but just a little more context. Probably 15 years ago now, the Facilities Subcommittee was created, and the charge for that Facilities Subcommittee was to create a comprehensive facilities management plan for the school district. I'm pleased to say that we are finally very close to bringing that to fruition. So in December, the Facilities Subcommittee recommended to the school committee that an RFP be issued, including what the content of that RFP should be. The school committee approved that, and this will be funded out of the facilities revolving fund, and since that time, the Facilities Subcommittee solicited bids, reviewed those proposals, talked with two of the three proposers, and this is the recommendation to select the firm that the Facilities Subcommittee thought was the best by far. So the charge to this bidder will be, or this vendor will be, to help create this comprehensive 20-year facilities management plan, which would be a significant milestone for the Milton Public Schools, and will be very important for town meeting as we start to talk about the major capital items that the town faces, including fire stations and a whole host of other things, but it's very important that we get some of the Milton Public Schools' major capital items on the radar for town meetings so that they know that they're going to need to protect this significant investment that they have in their school buildings and their school facilities. So with that, I would move that we approve the appointment of Drummy Roseanne Anderson to fulfill this contract.
Award the contract.
Award the contract.
Award the contract, and then authorize the chair to sign that.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion?
Yep.
Ms. Varela?
Yeah, so, so is the contract, just, just for clarification, because I know, just clarifying, I'm sorry, clarifying, that facilities management in the town is, you know, merged with, you know, with everything consolidated, thank you, it's late already for me, is consolidated, so, but, but this award would be strictly for the schools, or would it be to, for them to help in management of all buildings in the town?
Strictly for the schools.
Strictly for the schools, all right, just want to clarify.
Okay.
Further discussion?
What is this?
The contract.
This is the actual contract.
Any other questions? Dr. Donahue?
What's the expected timeline, roughly?
Based on their proposal, which could change, but approximately three months. But they, they highlighted that the, the gating item was access to the facilities. So the sooner we can provide access, the better, and the faster they'll be able to complete this task. Other questions? On the motion. All in favor? It's unanimous. I don't think we have any citizen speak topic response next meeting agenda items. Transportation?
Yep. So we'll have transportation, I have a transportation update, and barring any last-minute changes, I will also have our safety patrol people here to give a little update on how things have been going for the past month.
Excellent.
And Mr. Jake Smith, who's our Director of Transportation for the Milton Public Schools. So I've asked him to come along and bring whatever members of his patrol in the very, in the four elementaries that could attend. I'm looking forward to that. Yeah.
Great.
Policy will likely have second, second reading of the camera policy.
And hopefully, with our collective effort, we'll have a first draft on this private school approval policy.
Yes.
We'll put the third quarter report on again?
Yes.
For a vote?
Yeah.
The needs and priorities we'll put on?
Yeah.
Calendar?
Yes. Yeah. I'd, I'd also like to get the calendar approved.
The school calendar?
The school calendar.
And we'll have that preliminary field trip. We'll have a field trip.
Ms. Varela?
It might be too much, again, because I, I'd like to, especially for these busy nights, we're out almost every night, not to, not to go too late. So maybe not next time, but the time after. But is it still possible to get, I know I requested, and I just think it would be good for the, I'd like to see it and to just have the, again, our viewing community at large to see the, the finance education program that the Blue Hills puts on for us. That's, if it's too tight to do by the, you know, the end of the year, then we can wait. But if, if we can fit it in, I just think it's a
It's a great idea.
Yeah, I just think it's an interesting program. I'd like to hear about it, and I think it'd be good for the community to hear what they've been doing. Yeah.
The program at the high school?
Yeah. I mean, is it, is it just at the, I think it's just at the high school about teaching them all about?
They, they did a brief program at each elementary, but the high school program is more substantial.
Yeah, yeah. And that's great. Thank you.
That'd be great for them.
Great. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Wow. Second.
On the motion. All in favor? It's unanimous.
This is unusual, right?
Really, really unusual.